Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 18th meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We are delighted to have each of you with us. This time, I would ask that Ms. La Magna review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available in the front of the room on the table to my right. All of the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted on the bulletin board. Please feel free to view the exhibit at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission during the business meeting. The yellow forms are located next to Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Allison Brown. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature, and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Items on the agenda for first reading usually do not allow for public participation. However, there are some instances where citizens are allowed to speak on first reading items when they are considered public hearings. Items on the agenda for second reading are open for public hearing, and citizens may speak at the designated time. Resolutions under Administrative Item Number 10 are open for public comment, and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Item Number 7 is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comments section. All citizens completing a yellow form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach the lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The two and a half minute clock on the monitor above and directly in front of you will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time; you will be told when your time has expired. Item Number 13 is the Public Comment Form, and it shall convene after the adjournment of the business meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue that is not on the business meeting agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach the lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordnance reads as follows: It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, order to refuse to obey any ruling of the presiding officer or such meeting relatives that orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Gilliland?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Trager?
Here.
Commissioner Delgado?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here.
Okay, we'll now move on to item Number 4, which is the approval of the August 7th, 2019, business meeting of the city commission.
So moved.
Second.
Take a motion from Commissioner Gilliland, or I mean Commissioner Reed. Take the second from Commissioner Gilliland. Do we have questions or corrections? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. This time, if we have any changes to our agenda, our city manager will address them.
There are no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Gilliland, and a second from Commissioner Reed. No additional questions? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on, we have no presentations tonight, so we'll move on to item Number 7, which is public comments by people addressing the city commission. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on any item on the consent agenda. So far, I have one speaker, Mr. John Nicholson.
In his item, Madam Clerk?
He did not put an item on his sheet.
Yeah. Which item, Mr. Nicholson?
Of the 10, I'm down to four. E, F, and G, and K.
Yeah, E and K.
And it's nice of you, Ms. La Magna, to give me five minutes because it's two city commission meetings together. No, that's a joke. I had spoken earlier about it.
I was about to be fired.
She made it clear, it's only two and a half. E, F, and G regards the agreements with our police and fire, et cetera. I just talked to some people after the last meeting last month, and they were not quite sure it's going to cure the problem we had with the recession. I want to make absolutely positive that we are working on the ability to get our police and firemen up to where they should have been, headed up in the recession. So if people are being hired today, they're not making the same amount of money that someone who's been here 10 years. So I believe it's being addressed with the 7 percent, the three and the four and whatnot, but apparently, they do not. So if we could address that and make sure that it's absolutely positive. And secondly, K has the cure-in-place procedure to buy or choose them to put in the cure-in-place. We've had several hurricanes. I know that the area in front of the Windwood, which is very profitable for the city, has a drainage right next to their exit as they approach the beach. It's half-filled with sand, and there are several locations on the beachside that need, to me, that need to be cleaned before a hurricane. Because if there's going to be flooding, that's what's going to happen. So I'd rather us cure the problem in advance rather than afterwards. So if you could look into making sure that those drains that are on the beachside have already done the cure-in-place, but make sure they're cleaned before a hurricane, because we do have problems with flooding on the beachside.
Speaking of the issue form?
No, K, cure-in-place.
K is a like?
Oh, my handwriting, it is R.
This is the one you're talking about?
Yep, it's my handwriting.
Okay.
All right, yeah, the cure-in-place.
I have one additional speaker, Ms. Marjorie Johnson.
I'm here tonight to speak on Item D. I think this is very important that we do raise increases to our police officers and also our firemen. They have been before this podium many times asking for increase. Their job is to protect and serve, and some of them are doing their job and some of them are not. But, we say to you tonight, these people are putting their lives on the line every single day. They're working conditions where they have to go out. There was a shooting on my street, and a young man was killed, and nothing was done as far as arresting the person who killed him. I was at that funeral on Saturday. It was very, very sad. And the public is saying, somebody should have went to jail. Because it was in a locker room. We want these people to get increases, but we also want them to do their jobs. We want all of you to do your jobs, that's why you're here. And don't get mad and angry with the residents if they are out there protesting, saying, "Proud of this," they have some people that say, "Oh, they should be proud." We want these policemen to get additional wages because for years, they have worked and worked, and their salaries have been very low. A lot of them are leaving and going to other police departments. I went to the meeting in Port Orange, and they pay their officers more, and they are doing a good job. Also, almond commission. So we need to get rid of it. We need to provide wage increases to our police officers. They're working around the clock. There is a need for them to increase some of the services on my street because people are racing up and down every day, and nothing has been done about it. We still want them to get these raises because they have earned them. I think that you should get one too. And I am here tonight to speak for justice and make sure that all of our officers who are out there working every single day, putting their life on the line to protect and serve, and especially these firefighters. They complain to me, they want raises. Make it happen.
Yes, ma'am.
That's our final speaker for the consent agenda?
All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland, and a second from Commissioner Trager. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
All right, moving on to Item Number 9, which is our public hearings. Item Number 9A is Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, the Ellis Rezoning to Plan Development General, PDG. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezon 31-plus or minus acres of property located on the east side of Williamson Boulevard, approximately 1,750 feet north of LPGA Boulevard, and 1,200 feet south of Strickland Range Road, from Volusia County R2 Urban Family Single, Urban, Urban Single Family Residential, excuse me, to PDG Plan Development General District. Approving the Ellis Plan District Agreement with the Consolidated Tamoka Land Company, authorizing the development of the property as a multifamily residential complex, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Plan District Agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
Got one motion from Commissioner Gilliland?
Second.
We have a second. We have a second from Commissioner Delgado. Do we have any speakers?
I have Ms. Jessica Gao here, on behalf of the applicant.
Good evening, everyone. Jessica Gao with Cobb Cole, 149 South Ridwood Avenue. We just wanted to take a minute to thank city staff for working on this project with us. We're really excited, we think it's a great product, and we are conserving 70 percent of the project is open space and conservation, over 10 acres of conservation. So we think it's a great project, and it'll really help with the housing needs in the city, and we just want to answer any questions you have tonight.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? No, good project. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to Item Number 9B, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Clyde Morris Boulevard Industrial Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes, adopting amendments to the future land use map, changing the future land use designation of 38-plus or minus acres of property located on the east side of Clyde Morris Boulevard, approximately 1,730 feet south of LPGA Boulevard, from general industrial to mixed use, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland, and a second from Commissioner Reed. Do we have any speakers?
I do have Ms. Jessica Gao here, on behalf of the applicant.
All right, no questions from Ms. Gao? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted. Oh, you want to come back up?
Just questions.
Oh, do you have any questions? Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
The second public hearing is set for November 6. We'll now move on to Item 9C, which is the Budget Division, City of Daytona Beach Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Tentative Millage Rate and Budget. And do you want to start with the public hearing, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. And I have one person signed up to speak, Mr. John Nicholson.
Come on up, Mr. Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue. If I'm not mistaken, the millage that we are going to pass, or that you are going to speak about, gives us an additional $3 million. At one point, there was a $3 million more than what we would normally have gotten, which is exactly equal to the halfpenny sales tax which we would have gotten. If you recall, we would have raised $20 million, and we would have gotten back three. So whatever you're doing here, if we can keep that $3 million in, it's like passing the halfpenny sales tax. It wouldn't really hurt us, but we would have all the advantages, hopefully, of whatever Jim had planned for that $3 million, we would be able to accomplish. Thank you.
I do have one additional speaker, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Jim Cameron.
Good evening, and I'm Jim Cameron, Senior Vice President, Government Relations, Daytona Regional Chamber, and just wanted to commend you on your budget workshops and such, and I thought they were very much informative and very transparent and such, and so I liked the discussion at those. And I know that you wanted to get the best tax rate, a competitive tax rate, and that's what we want, chamber commerce-wise, is something that will attract new businesses to here. But also, we try to say at the same time, we want to make sure that those non-homesteaded properties are taken care of as well. That is business and commercial, but then that's also, will include those residential non-homesteaded properties, the rental houses, the apartments and all. And keep in mind, those are the folks, I mean, that are paying that paycheck-to-paycheck type rent. And so, and we have a lot of those, about 40 percent or so of the population here in Volusia County, so keep those folks in mind as well. But again, just wanted to commend you again for your hard work and everything throughout the budget process, and I wanted to thank Patricia Bliss and Fred Coulter. I've called them on several occasions when we put together our tax budget chart that we got out last week, or the week before, but I wanted to thank them for their cooperation and giving me the information we needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was my final speaker, so closed the public hearing, and I'll move on to read the first resolution. A resolution tentatively determining the amount and fixing the rate of taxation in making the annual property ad valorem levy in the amount of 5.8587 per $1,000 of non-exempt assessed value for general fund operations of the City of Daytona Beach for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2020, and the voted debt service millage of 0.2771, and providing an effective date.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland, and a second from Commissioner Reed. Yes, ma'am.
This year, I'd like to go, if we could, a little bit below the rollback rate. I would like to make an amendment to go to 5.6. We seem to have plenty of money coming in with our water rates going up another 3 percent, and all the new companies that are coming online, and the new housing projects. And I think we could still maybe go down a little bit and help a lot of our neighbors, our residents who are on fixed incomes. And I think we could do that and give our wonderful residents a break once in a while. With the budget about $257 million, and the revenue we expect to receive, it should balance out pretty close. And I remember not too many years ago, when our budget was $216 million. And I'm hoping with the new increase in revenue, we can go ahead and do this. I think we'll be fine. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to have the rate be 5.6.
Here, a second. Okay, motion dies. Do we have any other questions or comments? Commission in there, no other speakers? All right, we have a motion and a second. Who are the motions?
Gilliland and Reed.
Gilliland and Reed. Okay, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to the second resolution. A resolution tentatively adopting the budget for the fiscal year October 1st, 2019 to September 30th, 2020, for the City of Daytona Beach, prescribing the net sources of revenue in an estimated amount of $257,659,327, setting forth expenditures and transfers in the amount of $257,659,327, of which operating expenditures total $185,656,768, transfers $52,270,697, and capital expenditures $19,731,862, and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland, and a second from Commissioner Reed. Do we have any additional questions of your staff? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. And at this time, we need to...
We need to adjourn for DDA? Okay, we will adjourn and allow the DDA to come in, and we'll be back in a moment.
I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Downtown Development Authority. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner May?
Present.
Cheryl Cook?
Present.
Amy Kazinsky?
Present.
Joe Hopkins?
Present.
Michael Schnaps Tyler.
We have a forum. I'd like to have a presentation for Mr. Reed Berger.
Thank you, good evening, Board. So I'm Reed Berger, Redevelopment Director. The DDA is projected to receive revenues in the amount of $137,927 in ad valorem tax revenue, based on a 1-mill tax rate, which was recommended by the DDA at your July 23rd meeting, and which is a 5.42 percent tax decrease from the rollback rate of 1.0573. The total budget is $229,594, which includes $55,567 in payments to the downtown CRA, which in turn is, the DDA is going to get by agreement, back from the CRA. And then the budget also includes $153,594 for marketing and promoting downtown, $40,000 for events, and $36,000 in farmers market revenue from vendors and sponsors. No funds are proposed to be allocated from the DDA's unreserved balance. And that's the end of my report.
This is a public meeting. Do we have any speakers?
I have no speakers.
We have two resolutions to consider. May we have the first, please?
Resolution tentatively determining the amount and fixing the rate of taxation in making the annual property ad valorem levy in the amount of 1.0000 per $1,000 of non-exempt assessed value for general fund operations of the Daytona Beach Downtown Development Authority for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2020, decreasing property taxes by 5.42 percent, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a second, a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor said aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
The third, the second resolution, a resolution tentatively adopting the budget for the fiscal year October 1st, 2019 to September 30th, 2020, for the Daytona Beach Downtown Development Authority, prescribing the net sources of revenue in the estimated amount of $229,594, setting forth expenditures in the amount of $229,594, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor said aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Motion carries four to zero. There being no further business, I declare the meeting adjourned.
At this time, we will reconvene our regularly scheduled commission meeting.
Moving on to Item Number 9E, it's the Permits and Licensing Division, Non-Ad Valorem Assessment and Collection of Demolition Costs. This is a resolution public hearing. A resolution of the City of Daytona Beach, Florida, related to the non-ad valorem assessment ruled demolitions and other practices utilized by the city, providing for the incorporation of recitals herewith, providing for the approval and adoption of the non-ad valorem assessment rule for demolition costs and expenses, providing for certification of the assessment rule, providing for severability, providing for conflicting resolutions, and providing an effective date.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland, and a second from Commissioner Reed.
I do have two speakers, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Marjorie Hicks, and on deck is Betty Michael. There, Marjorie Hicks?
Want to check, see if she's in the lobby? Don't want to miss her chance.
Is there a Betty Michael here? I think she's out. Third line. They're not out there? Okay, then I have no speakers.
No speakers. All right, we have a motion and a second. No other speakers, no questions from the commission. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Mr. Mayor, it would probably be appropriate to recognize the property appraiser with this item.
Absolutely.
Larry Bartlett?
Larry Bartlett, our property appraiser, is here. Appreciate his presence, and good to see you.
Stand here, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right. You want to greet us in any way?
No. I'll certainly come up after that.
It's always a pleasure to appear before this commission, and a lot of friends here, so good to see you again, and I hope this non-ad valorem initiative does what it's supposed to do, so, thanks very much.
Could I ask a quick question? Just for everybody's benefit. What is the benefit to the city doing it this way, please?
Well, the city doing it this way puts the out-of-pocket costs incurred by the city for these demolitions on the tax bill. So they get reimbursed when the property owner pays the tax bill for that property. If they were just a regular code enforcement lien, they would have to wait their turn, and the city would have to basically not get paid. So this is a way to try to encourage people to come into compliance voluntarily, because if they don't, they find themselves in a pay us now or pay us later situation.
And then the next question I have, sir, is could you please explain to everybody at home, the homestead issue? How does this impact people with homestead? Does it, does it not? How does this work?
This initiative was intended for the folks that are not, intentionally not complying with code enforcement, and we have safeguards in this program. People with a code enforcement lien being placed on the tax bill, if it's a homesteaded, especially an occupied homestead, it raises a red flag. And if it doesn't reach a certain threshold amount, it also won't get placed on the tax bill. So, but you know, this situation, when we're talking about demolition of properties that are unsafe and a blight on the neighborhood, and these are owned by not homesteaded residents, these are owned by absentee owners who have been previously thumbing their nose at the City of Daytona Beach, which is why we have, you know, the blight problem that we do. So hopefully, this addresses that in a positive way.
Thank you so much, sir.
Pleasure to be here.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. No additional questions or comments? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to Item Number 9, it's the Development and Administrative Services, Madison Point Apartments, Proportionate Fair Share Agreement. This is a resolution. Public hearing. A resolution approving the Madison Point Apartments' proportionate fair share agreement with Madison Point Housing LP and the County of Volusia, providing for the proportionate fair share contribution by Madison Point Housing LP relating to transportation facility contingency for the Madison Point Apartments generally located on the west side of Williamson Boulevard, south of Cornerstone Boulevard, and on the north side of Tamoka Town Center Drive, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland, and a second from Commissioner Delgado.
And I do have Ms. Jessica Gao here for any questions.
All right, any questions for Ms. Gao? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to Item Number 9G, it's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, Consolidated Tamoka Parcel F, Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting comprehensive plan amendments in accordance with Chapter 163, Part 2 Florida statutes, adopting amendments to the future land use map, changing the future land use designation of 120-plus or minus acres of property located on the south side of Granada Boulevard, east of Rema Ridge, um, excuse me, Rema Ridge Road, and approximately two miles west of Interstate 95, from low-intensity urban to mixed use, and amending Neighborhood Policy B to allow additional dwelling units and reduce non-residential entitlements on the property, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland, and a second from Commissioner Delgado.
I have Mr. Darren Elkind here for questions, on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. If there are no questions, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
The second public hearing is November 6. Moving on to item number 10, which is our administrative items. Item number 10A is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Consolidated Tamoca Parcel F, rezoning to Plan Development General, PDG. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 990-plus or minus acres of property generally located on the south side of Granada Boulevard, east of Rema Ridge Road, and approximately two miles west of Interstate 95, from Volusia County A2, Rural Agriculture, RC Resource Corridor, and City PDG Plan Development General to City PDG Plan Development General District, authorizing the Consolidated Tamoca Parcel F Plan District Agreement with Consolidated Tamoca Land Company, authorizing the property to be developed as a mixed-use project with approximately 2,400 residential units and 339,500 square feet of commercial area, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the planned district agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Delgado.
And again, I have Darren Elkind here on behalf of the applicant for any questions.
No questions. Thank you, sir. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
The public hearing is set for November 6. Moving on to item number 10B. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Land Development Code Text Amendment, amend Article 6 Development Standards, Section 6.8. C, fences, walls, and hedges. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the Land Development Code, amending Section 6.8. C, to allow security fencing on undeveloped properties throughout the city, subject to conditions, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing an effective date.
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Gilliland. Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries in seven zero.
The public hearing is October 2. Moving on to item number 10C. It's the Business Enterprise Management Department First Step Shelter Lease Agreement Resolution. A resolution approving the agreement for lease, operation, and management of the First Step Shelter between the City and First Step Shelter, Inc., located at 3889 West International Speedway Boulevard, for a five-year term with five options to renew for additional five-year terms, subject to conditions, for a nominal rent of $10, requiring provision of emergency shelter and program services for homeless persons in Volusia County, authorizing the city manager and the city clerk to execute the agreement and providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner.
Opposite.
Nope, opposite way. Commissioner Gilliland was the motion, the second was Commissioner Reed. Thank you. Do we have any questions? You have a speaker?
I do have one speaker, Mr. Doyle Lewis.
Before Mr. Lewis speaks, I need to point out there is a typo in the agenda summary and the request for action. It should be four resting spaces and not five. That is how it's provided in the resolution and in the lease.
Okay.
How many? Thank you.
Four, not five.
Mr. Lewis, you can go forward.
Thank you, Doyle Lewis, Daytona Beach, United States. It's all in the numbers, isn't it? It was just proven typos happen. I was at the meeting of the First Step Shelter on Monday. I liked everything I heard. There was an article that was given to me on the internet today, saying that California has almost 50% of the homeless out there. I'm not sure if that's completely true. But with the First Step Shelter, that's going to help Volusia County? It's going to really help the health department in Volusia County because it's going to have a full kitchen, which makes the diet of the homeless people better. So much better when you have hot food. So thank you for all your hard work, for everybody who's involved, and on this agreement for five years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
That was my final speaker, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments from the commission? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. I would like to thank our city attorney for what can't be overstated, just excellent patience. Just, the patience just really was, has been phenomenal. But also the professionalism and the expertise and the negotiation, just going back and forth and bringing us to this point. It's been a, you've done a heck of a job. Appreciate it.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
That's a first for an attorney, I believe.
Yeah, you've done a great job. All right, moving on.
Moving on to item number 10D. It's the City Manager's Office Downtown Development Authority Appointments Resolution. A resolution appointing two members to the Downtown Development Authority for three-year terms ending June 30, 2022, and providing effective date. Ms. Betty Goodman to present.
Good evening. This agenda item is to appoint two members to the Downtown Development Authority. The membership terms of Tammy Kozinski and Joseph Hopkins expired on June 30, and both individuals would like to be reappointed. We have no other applications. May we have?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Motion from Commissioner Gilliland, second from Commissioner Traeger. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Moving on to 10E. It's the City Manager's Office First Step Shelter Board Appointment Resolution. A resolution appointing one member to serve on the Board of Directors for the First Step Shelter, Inc., providing to that person appointed to serve at the pleasure of the City Commission and providing an effective date. I did have one speaker sign up for this item, Ms. Marjorie Johnson.
Marjorie Johnson on 22 South Peach. I'm here tonight to say that I am highly in favor of Ms. Roseanne Torrento to be appointed to this board. I feel that she will help move this board forward. Her expertise and experience is badly needed. I know we've been having problems with people resigning from the board, so I think that she will come in and move this board forward. I have known her for some time. We have worked together in, with Heather Post, we helped get her elected. We're trying to find good people to serve on these boards, because when you make that happen, you can see things move in a positive direction. I feel that she is highly qualified for this board, and she will move it forward so that we can get this First Step Shelter done. And I appreciate her applying for the board, and we are happy to have her. Thank you.
I nominate Roseanne Torrento.
Torrento.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a, we have a motion for Roseanne Torrento from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Reed. Do we have any questions or comments from the commission? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Ms. Torrento?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. We are at the end. Okay, we will start with Commissioner Gilliland.
Actually, just one thing. I wanted to thank the folks from staff, the manager, deputy police chief, Denzel from, from Code, Bob. We all met with the, the president of the Bayberry HOA and their property manager at the PD last week. It was last week, wasn't it? The other thing's kind of blending together now. But no, it was, it was a very good meeting. It was to discuss problems we're having with voluntary living out there, and it's, it's something that I think we've made, we've made some good progress on. I think they're very appreciative of the, the level of effort that the city was willing to put in to try and, try and improve the situation. You know, we all know what a challenge it is. And you know, there's a couple of things that we, I think we came up with that will be greatly valued by those folks, and I think is going to address some of the problems that they do have. So I just wanted to thank everybody for, for participating in that. That's all. Thank you.
All right, awesome. Commissioner Henry?
Just one thing. I just wanted to thank the city staff for the wonderful job that they did during the, during the hurricane. Ms. Goodman, making sure that we were up to date every 10, 15, 20 minutes, knowing what was going on, so that we could get that information out to the, to the people in the community, to let them know where they could get sand, what times they could pick up certain items, and, and things that they needed. And also to our first responders who, you know, had to be away from their own families to, to make sure that they were ready and available for, for the hurricane. And to the mayor, because he made sure he posted every, every 30 minutes. He kept the entire community abreast of what was going on, the entire storm. And you don't see very many mayors that, that do that. In fact, you have people commenting that their mayor never does anything like that. So I, I just wanted to commend you on that as well. And that, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, good, I get their time. Well, I'll start with the hurricane relief and echo everything that Commissioner Henry has said. And yes, Mr. Mayor, you even knocking on doors. You were out there in the midst of everything, so I thank you for being that type of leader. And I wanted to share also in regards to relief efforts, how Daytona came together. As a sorority, when you think of the southern region for Delta Sigma Theta, they also say Florida and the Bahamas. So we had an all-state call-out to assist, if we could. The three chapters in the Bahamas partnered with the Red Cross, and we actually had a location in Florida, Davie, Florida, to take our belongings marked as Delta Sigma Theta. And we've already received word, they've, they've gotten our boxes. I had a presidential webinar last night, and they've already received our, the things that we sent. The community really came out, although we sponsored it, but we invited the community to join us, and we had such a great turnout. We filled a 15-foot U-Haul truck, and they still had to make room for Cocoa and for Melbert to add their things. They had to readjust our things to put their stuff in, in the truck because of what we'd done. And then piggybacking off of that, we joined Daytona United. The African-American community came together under the leadership of the Black Clergy Alliance, and they invited several groups from the Divine Nine, which are the nine African-American organizations, fraternities, and sororities to come together, the NAACP, the minority-elected officials, several organizations joined together, and we filled a 20-foot truck that's going down to Miami. And they had three AMU churches that were going to receive those items, so that when they arrive, those who were leaving the Bahamas, they would have these churches to go to and find things in the states. So that was, we just all came together. It's, it's sometimes, a tragedy can sometimes be a blessing as well, because it, it shows people who you are. And when somebody shows you who you are, you should believe them. In regards to, I want to bring something to your attention. There's a drainage problem on the corner of Adams and International Speedway. I know the, the state just worked on International Speedway, but there is something wrong right there in front of that rental tire place, because the water is building up, and when cars go by, I mean, the water is spraying higher than the building. So something's wrong with that drainage. I don't know if the drainage just needs to be cleaned, or there needs to be something else done in that area. But I, I took a picture, and I meant to forward it to you all, to see that how just when we have one of our short torrential downpours, how that builds up. And, and that's, it's unsafe, because folks are trying to avoid that lane, that southbound lane on ISB to avoid the water. So we need to check into that. Now, chief, are you here, chief of police? You know, we got a couple of chiefs in the room and a bunch of Indians. Chief, we have an issue that's been brought to, to the attention of Commissioner May and myself, and they've spoken to me about this a couple of times. So we no longer have a little station on, on Mayor McLoughlin Boulevard, a substation any longer.
No, no. PCU took that back, probably about two years ago.
All right. However, even though we don't have the substation, we do need more of a presence.
Okay.
We were told even last night at the, the stat, the comm stat meeting, open drug sales are taking place. You know, we just had that, that incident where the young man lost his life behind the church. And the speeding is, is continuing. Now, I, I understand that we had a presence immediately after that, but we may need to put something.
We've been doing stuff in the air. We probably wrote 50, 60 tickets out there. Been in communication with Ms. Heinz from the barber shop, and Ian, her son, has been working with us.
That's what he was, yesterday, last night.
Yeah. We, we talked to him. We, he actually watched us write tickets out there. As far as the open-air drug issues, I haven't seen anything in there. We've been working that whole entire year. It's been pretty quiet, from our standpoint. But we're there all the time, and we work hand-in-hand with PCU security. They have our radio, our eyes and ears, and we're up and all over the campus there, so.
And do we look like police when we're there? Are, are we in unmarked cars?
Both.
Okay.
We have unmarked cars, and we got some other stuff coming I can't release now, but there's some good stuff. But I know that we are in a heavy presence. I drive through there every day, myself, and check on the park, and come down to MMB, and by the Pride's Tire Shop. So I'm there all the time. So unless I'm missing something, I haven't seen any open-air drug sales, and I haven't had any reports over there. It's been pretty quiet. I know we wrote, I can get your report on the tickets. It's probably close to 50 or 60 tickets.
All right.
Since July.
Okay.
And that, just specifically in that block.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad that set your attention. Well, I know the mayor's probably going to expound more of this, but he and I and Commissioner Traeger were there for the groundbreaking of Buc-E's. I love the Bucky Nuggets. I want more. It's exciting. I'm sure you all have read about Buc-E's coming to town. We took pictures with the Bucky, Little Stuff Bucky. And I will show you my keychain. I have a little Bucky representation. But I think that this travel station, as it's being called, is going to draw, going to be a draw for us. They shared with us that people in Texas drive as much as 100 miles to come to Buc-E's. And I actually had someone on Facebook to tell me that when they visited Texas, they went there and they couldn't wait until one came. It was a very close friend of mine, and I didn't know she'd ever been to one. So that was enlightening as well. Last evening, I had the opportunity to attend the, the Code Stat meeting. Commissioner May was there as well. I'd like to commend Captain, Captain Lee and his staff on the presentation that they gave to the community, because those meetings are usually held in the, in the morning, and everyone isn't available in the morning. Some of us still work. And so to be able to go to that and hear what's happening in our community in regards to Code. I also went on the Code Walk with them this morning. He and Denzel Sykes had spread out the Code officers to take us in different directions on Mayor McLoughlin Boulevard, from Martin Luther King Jr. to Ridgewood, to look at, at properties and for them to identify what is really a Code issue. So I was able to join them for that today, because normally when they have that at 9 o'clock in the morning, I'm, I'm somewhere else. And as long as every two weeks they pay me, that's where I'll be, that's somewhere else. But I, I enjoyed that walk and enjoyed meeting the officers last night and knowing who the officers were. They also shared, what I really enjoyed, was Captain Lee shared with us the background of those Code officers, you know, how long they've been with our city, how long they had worked at other locations, if they had a military background. Just learning about their expertise and experience was also knowledgeable for me. I enjoyed that. Let me tell you, I, I hope this happens. But you know, we have looked at an eyesore on Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. for quite some time now. It was a vote that we all took that I declined, and we have an opportunity on the 23rd, which is next Monday, to actually come together as a community, and I'm inviting everyone to come to the Dickinson Center at 6:00 PM, to talk about an opportunity for an affordable housing project. You all are going to have something in your mailboxes as well. And I know we have said that affordable housing is going to be something, it's, it's priority for us. We've all agreed on that. We voted on that. This is the old MLK Lofts. We're looking at potentially making it the MLK Manor. And so come out and hear that potential project, as we continue to press forward to try to get some federal funds to assist in that. Each of you have received letters, and you can also get a packet today that's answering some of the questions that staff has asked, so that we can determine how we want to move forward on that project. And I believe, Mr. Mayor, that's all that I have to say this evening.
Yes, that's a great project, and thank you for taking the lead on bringing that meeting to the community.
Yes, sir.
On behalf of your residents. Commissioner Traeger?
First off, I'd like to say congratulations to Roseanne and Tammy and Joe. You're hard workers, all of you. And I would like to say thank you to Capri for getting that guy after 14 years. Wonderful. Way to go. As Commissioner Reed mentioned, we were at Buc-E's, and we were at the fundraiser for the Heritage Preservation Trust Havana Knights. Man, do we have some dancers in town. But anyhow, I was also informed about on Shady Place, there's been doing some unauthorized dumping, that their trucks actually coming there and dumping their load on a vacant lot there. I don't know if you can look into it. The gentleman was supposed to come here and talk about it tonight. I don't know if he is here or not. That's all.
I'm sorry, if I could jump on her dumping. Someone also shared last night they're dumping on White on White Hall in between South Street and, um, Bellevue. But I shared that with Officer Stinson and he said he would look into it. So you may want to send an email.
Thank you. Commissioner Delgado?
Nothing for me tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So here we go. Let me just get into it. So with regard to dumping and fences, a few months ago, um, I started a process of inquiring about fences on vacant lots specifically for this reason. I was getting complaints, uh, from residents saying that there was illegal dumping taking place and that they wanted to protect their property. So the fencing regulation is as a result of the residents. So thank you to the residents for coming forth and seeking me out and the city changed ordinance. So thank you for that. Um, next thing, an update on magnolia, Mr. Chisholm. So far what's happening is, um, people are seeing changes on magnolia. Could you tell them what's happening, please?
Yeah. Magnolia is, is undergoing a, um, the, uh, the replanting and, and, and re, uh, envisioning that whole corridor from, from Palmetto, well, I think it's already from my, is from, uh, Ridgewood all the way down to Beet Street. And, um, it's underway right now. It's a, it's a plan. It, it's been in the works for a long time in the city, but we're just now got it, got it funded and we're actually out there, uh, replacing the vegetation.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you. Um, a week ago, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, my goodness, it's been a while. I brought up zoning with Commissioner Reed for bars and lounges on MMB, Historic Second Avenue. I'd like to take a step back from that. I'd like us to consider starting with restaurants with lounges attached, meaning fifty-one percent food with a lounge attached. The reason I say that is that I went to the merchants in that little area, um, in Zone Three and I spoke with them and they thought that starting up with the restaurant and then a lounge attached, they would be comfortable with that concept. It would actually promote possibly a more adult crowd. They would come in for an evening out, dinner, and then they would have a little bit of dancing. And the goal is to promote entertainment in that area. So that was the conversation that was had. And I'd like us to research, do we already have zoning for restaurant lounges? Can that already happen? Or where are we with that? We were discussing it last time.
If, if you're pointing to me, uh, that's really something for the planning board.
Okay.
Uh, the planning department to look at for you.
All right.
In terms of where it's allowed now.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and what changes might be made.
Sure. And conjunction with that, we also had the issue with churches, having, uh, the closeness to the churches. Have we looked at that at all?
Again, I would rely on staff.
Okay.
Come up with those regulations. Mr. Morozak?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dennis Morozak, Planning Director. Regarding the churches, we did take something to the planning board at the last meeting. So you'll see that at an upcoming meeting.
Okay.
Uh, dealing with the separation between the, the churches and the, the, uh, facilities that would have alcohol uses. As far as the restaurants, I'm gonna take a look at that. We're actually looking at some opportunities to do some more, uh, development on MMB, including the restaurants, uh, uh, opening up the regulations a little bit more to be able to, uh, to do that.
So that would be restaurant with the lounge?
Yes. Uh, so yeah, most restaurants, they, they can operate with something as long as they're fifty-one percent on the food that they can do the alcohol.
What's there now?
Uh, I'd have to take a look. I'm not exactly sure. I was looking for Reed Berger is the Redevelopment Director and, um, but I'm not exactly sure the zoning. And I do believe, I believe that it does permit the restaurant uses though on an MMB already.
Restaurant but no lounge yet?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's where we're headed.
Okay.
Okay, so I look forward to hearing about that. Next thing, beautification plan on MMB. Where are we with that? Both Commissioner Reed and I are quite excited, so I'd like to know where we are in that process.
Public Works, come on up.
I'm David Waller, Deputy Public Works Director. We're working with, uh, with an LA is under continuing service contracts to develop some bidable, bidable, um, uh, site plan details that we can put out to bid and be a review first, but some bidable documents and some concepts that we can share. Uh, there, he's got some programs and software that can produce better documents than we can in-house.
Well, does that mean that in the future we'll have another meeting with the community to kind of include them in the process?
If that's, uh, if that's the wish of the city manager and the commission, we can. Uh, we're gonna produce some documents first for.
Okay.
For the city manager's review and then we can do with them as we see fit to make them work.
Commissioner Reed?
I, I think by the time they have drawings and, and we review it, it will be what it is, but I think we should have one so they know what's coming.
Yes. Okay. All righty, we'll take a look at that. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, moving on. Again, you know, as I sit here, uh, residents often say that we bring issues up, but we never actually have a resolution to some of the issues you bring up week upon week. So something I brought up about, I guess, three weeks ago was, um, where are we with the group home ordinance right now? We've been working on this for how long, sir?
Um, it, we've been working on it diligently. It's, it's been a rather complicated item.
Yeah, it's been a while, yeah. But it's been great. It's been very good.
Um, again, perhaps Mr. Morozak can address this, but I believe we're scheduled to be heard before planning board.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you. Exactly. We're going to the planning board next week for the, for a, uh, for a hearing on that particular item and then we'll be at the city commission right after that.
Very excited to see it, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, the next one is about, three weeks ago, I asked for the vacation rental situation to be looked at and fines to be assessed at one thousand, five thousand, ten thousand, and fifteen thousand for people who are breaking the law in Daytona Beach as it relates to housing. How's that coming?
All right. Now, again, you're addressing that to me.
Please, sir.
Um, I did prepare a memo which I provided to the entire commission, which lays out our entire code enforcement procedures, along with outlining, you know, what our relative regulations are for dorm living and how that might apply to, um, uh, Airbnb-type rentals and also to sober homes.
Mm-hmm.
So I've, I've, I've provided that to the board for your educational benefit. Um, that gets back then to code enforcement. So one of the things I outlined in my memo was the possibility of taking to the code board, uh, violations for Airbnb-type short-term rentals, um, as a type of violation that cannot be cured. It's irreparable. Uh, if they can establish that with the magistrate of the code board, then the magistrate and the code, and the code board each have authority to impose a one-time fine up to fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay. So this is possible and it's in the works?
It's possible now. It's not in the works. It's, it's capable of being done now.
Okay. How do we make this an actionable thing? How do we do this? What do we have to do next?
There's nothing to be done.
So all we're waiting.
Except code needs to go out and enforce and make those arguments to the code board and to the ma, or, and/or to the magistrate.
All I have to do is find somebody right now and then this is what would happen next.
Issue the citation, make the argument, uh, hope that you can get the code board or the magistrate to agree with you. And it's up to them to impose the fine, right? It's, it's not the city that imposes the fine.
But it's up to fifteen thousand dollars.
Per incident, yes.
Fantastic. All righty, that's good to know.
And then that becomes a lien against the property, which can then be, uh, enforced either at the resale of the property or through foreclosure, uh, depending on certain circumstances.
Okay. That's, that's very exciting for me. Thank you so much. I have many residents who will be very happy to hear about this. And I, I'm not sure if it's something we want to let the community know where, that we can do this. I'm not sure what the next step is, but I would hate to be the person who's caught in that position.
So we have met with, um, code people, with Mr. Sykes, um, us, Mr., uh, Captain Lee, uh, about that possibility. So they're well aware of it. They've been educated as well. Um, and, uh, my understanding from talking to them is that they will be proceeding with those types of violations.
Excellent, sir. Thank you so much. Um, last night we went to the code meeting, the, the community meeting. It was fantastic. Captain Lee, Chief Capri, um, I enjoyed myself, if that's possible. The residents, I think, got really good information out of it. And from that, I always try to get something. And this is what I heard. We live in the twenty-first century. We have, um, a housing issue. We have young adults who are now staying at home with their families longer. And here's the problem. The problem is you have a father and a mother, a couple with two cars. And then you have their child who's going to school at Daytona State or BCU or Amory Riddle. And then you have two more kids who are now driving to high school, let's say. But they cannot park their cars where they live. And my question is, do we have a way to address this issue currently? And this is not just an issue, um, with the people with there last night. I hear it in Zone Three, Zone Five, it's everywhere. If you have kids living at home, you're only allowed to have X number of cars parked in your driveway. And you cannot put your car on the grass. But there are people living in homes with more people living there who are family members. So my question is, is there anything that we can do to help the residents, sir?
Uh, Dennis? I think we had a discussion, uh, this might relate to, uh, allowing the driveway to be expanded and provide parking, additional parking in the driveway. Even if it's a single, single garage, they can still expand the driveway and have access to.
That's true. That's true, yeah. They can expand the driveway. We do allow that now to, um, and in this particular case that you're referring to is a, uh, a, a three-car garage that could be expanded, the driveway to, to allow the additional parking up there. But it can be done for a one-car garage as well to be able to expand the, uh, the area to park.
They have a one-car garage and obviously they don't have enough parking. They can expand it beyond that one-car limit. Is that correct?
You, you can. You do have, um, uh, you do have some, uh, open space requirements that you'd have to take a look at, but, um, um, and how close you can be to the side of the property line, that, we'd have to look at that as well. But you do have the opportunity to put two cars, um, paving for two cars in front of the, the house.
What is the process that my resident has to go through? What would they have to do? They would have to come to permitting, licensing, planning?
It would, it would be P and L. It would be a building permit to do an improvement to the front of the, uh, the property to be able to expand, uh, to be able to put the paving in for the parking.
Okay. So they'd be taking some of their, their front yard, extending it? And I'm describing it in detail, not because I don't understand.
Right.
Because I have people watching this this evening. I want them to understand.
Well, you, right now you have the front of the house where you have, you know, you got the area with the driveway and you have the, the grass on the side and you can't park on the grass. So it's just coming in with a building permit that would allow a modification to that driveway and to the, to the parking area to expand it, to allow parking on a, on another space instead of parking on the grass.
Is there any reason they'd be denied?
Um.
What if they have no garage? You said with a garage. What if they have?
Well, we have, we have minimum standards in our land development code for open space and, and we, we take a look at all of these things when we do the development. As long as it's in compliance with our land development code, uh, it wouldn't be denied.
So the city is open to this, provided it's unpaved?
Yes. I, I think what would be good, good, so you'd have a good idea of what we're talking about. Uh, bring back some examples of, of expansions that would be allowed.
Please.
We can do that.
Single-family residential properties with a varying, uh, you know, things that they have to look at. And, uh, and that can be the basis really for giving information to the public about their project.
So I'm actually.
Then they can ask questions about it.
Thank you so easily, Sal. Thank you, sir. I'm actually have to call some residents right now. We're waiting to hear the response to this question.
Sure.
So I so appreciate that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And for me, that is, that's it. That's it. Thank you so much.
Okay. Very well. Good job. Um, had a big agenda with a lot of items since we weren't here, but I, I don't have as much. I have, um, one, Buc-Ee's was, was great. Uh, it's a little bit scary though when you think about the fact that they will have a hundred thousand visitors a day.
Crazy.
That's, that's, that's busy.
That's wild.
Um, sixty thousand of them will come from a hundred miles away.
Wow.
So being, being honest, that's, the, the, the volume of traffic is unbelievable, but I look at that in two ways. Uh, we are a tourist destination and it's just one more reason for people not only to come to Daytona Beach, but to come to our many other venues and to see our city and for us to be that city on the hill that I feel that we are and that we're called to be. So I, I do look at it that way, but I'm, I am also realistic that that, that volume of traffic is, is frightening. But that being said, this place is so exciting to, I haven't heard one person, and I've said this repeatedly, I've never heard a person who's visited a Buc-Ee's who wasn't excited that is coming to Daytona Beach. Not one. I mean, they, they, you know, and these, these people, many of them live, uh, adjacent to, uh, where it's gonna be located. But they are beyond happy, glad, as I said the other day, that, that they're gonna have, uh, Buc-Ee's in, in our community. Uh, so it's very exciting, uh, and a major project, a major investment, uh, in the city. The pro, the property itself was somewhere around fifteen million dollars to buy and I think that the construction, uh, is fifteen to twenty million. So you're talking about a major investment in our community, um, as, as we have, uh, you know, quite a few. Um, three things I want to commend, uh, staff on tonight. Uh, first one starts with code enforcement. Uh, when I first was elected, I went to speak to a community group, Save Our Neighborhoods, and they said their number one problem was code enforcement. and they said their number one problem was code enforcement. And so they wanted proactive code enforcement. So I came back and shared that here with the commission, and I think for the last seven years, we've just gotten better and better and better. We got better immediately because you immediately appropriated more staff, but over the last seven years, we have just progressively gotten just better and better. And I want us to continue to be better. But one of the things I do want us as a community to realize is that we still live in a time where we have residents who have challenges. So code enforcement is important, but it's also important that we as a community, for home-stated properties in particular, that we be as sensitive as possible and try to find community ways to support people so that they can continue to have the property that they've worked hard for, that they've inherited. We don't want to rob people of that right because they don't have the means to keep up with our expectations. We still live in a community where people have a lot of challenges. So I want us to be dual-minded and not singularly focused. Last year, we talked a little bit to the manager and the year before about better communication with us as a staff, meaning the commission, but also with the community. And out of that came this, it's one thing that came out of it, but also prior to that was the office of our Public Information, Susan Savone's office, has simply taken life in terms of information in our community to a new level. The postings and their ability and the way that they're communicating with our residents through social media is phenomenal. And so I wanted to thank her and I wanted to commend you as well on establishing and pushing that initiative, because when I commended her and I went in one day and told her and Louis and I think it's Shelley and one other person what a magnificent job they've done, she texted me back and said that, you know, it really came from your pushing and your giving her the latitude to do that, and was something that I know that this commission has been committed to seeing more of, and commendations to you and to them. And the final thing, and this is all about communication, really the reports, you know, I know we hear things from residents a lot of times when they say that we talk about things up here that don't ever get resolved. Well, sometimes they take seven or eight years, like the homeless shelter, and we work on them and they, we work on them, it's just what they take. But they, a lot of times they're in progress, but the reports that we receive, you know, from Ms. Goodman, that really, you can check off what's really happening. And so it's our job then to, as commissioners and as mayor, to be able to communicate that to our constituents, not necessarily in meeting time, but to be able to communicate that these things are happening. This is what's taking place, if we said this, because the job that you're doing in letting us know how things are happening is, again, commendable. And I'm feeling good about a lot of things that are taking place in this city at this particular time. I know we are approaching a different type of season where different things are being said and things are being promoted. From my perspective, a lot of that is hogwash. Things are getting better and things that we are asking to be addressed are being addressed. And residents, if they, if you work with us, if you communicate with us, I think it's our aim, as a commission and staff's aim, to serve you better. And so tonight for me, I'm feeling good about the way things are going. I'm not satisfied. Let's continue to push forward, to do greater, but we have come a long way in the last seven or eight years since I've been up here. And again, commendations to all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We really appreciate it, but I want you to know we have taken it to heart and you're seeing the results of trying to be more transparent. And an interesting thing over the course of the last couple of weeks during the storm, we had 30,000 fans that followed the storm as it related to the posts that we made on Facebook. We had 712,000 impressions that were part of that process and 3.4 million shares. So the message is getting out and it's not just a temporary effort. This is our goal, is to improve on our giving of information to the public so that they're aware of what we are doing and what is going on in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This meeting is adjourned.
There you go. You're up, Mr. Nicholson.
I have a quick five minutes. John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue, which brings me to the point where I was at the county council yesterday, the county called on 32 people in a half an hour at three minutes apiece. So they're doing three minutes. I can't wait for us to go back to three minutes. In public speaking, three minutes is about the optimum. Secondly, graffiti is taking over Beachside big time. I've mentioned several times to staff. Now this guy Dopey, D-O-P-E, is tagging everything. Salty Dog, when you come down ISB, once you come over the bridge, Gary's building got it, Dopey's on Salty Dog, it's on several buildings on A1A, he's hit every trash can along the boardwalk. I'm asking you to just have staff go to all those trash cans and the lids and just take it off. The public property, since we left it on for so long, they're now tagging and tagging and tagging. If you allow it to continue, it'll just get worse, and it has. I understand you're picking up cigarette butts and whatnot, but there are major, major monies that are happening in downtown that are not being spent on Beachside. Landscaping, we have so many buildings, because the tourists walk on our sidewalks, and when you see all this garbage that's in front of these businesses, it shouldn't be. It really should be attractive. It's like Disney. They pick up paper constantly. A1A, knock on wood, is now landscaped, so it makes it very easy to pick up trash. But like the Starlight Diner, it is, front, back, it's tagged, the wall in the back is tagged. We have to get on that. We have to present a very attractive face to those people that are coming down to spend money. The idea that we treat them as second-class citizens in a garbage dump because we don't care is what's coming out. We have the staff, we have what, 17 people dedicated to keeping that area clean? If 17 people can't do it, you know, seven days a week, there's a problem. Okay? You can't put that many people in such a small area, the CRA area, and not get things done, not trash being picked up and things of that nature. We have to put a concerted effort. They're redoing Magnolia again for the, what, fifth time in the last 30 years? Beachside, boardwalk in the last 30 years. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson, and on deck is Robert Stoltman.
Marjorie Johnson, 122 South East Street. I just was outside and I looked at the rack where the cards was, and I'm noticing that all of your cards, and this is Ruth Trager's card is always there, and then your card is there and the rest of them. You need to have those cards out there so that the constituents will know that you are accessible to them, and it's only two people on this podium, cards is up there, and there's some people's cards that's never been out there. That's you, Mr. Goodland, and you say your card don't need to be out there, then you want to run for mayor, then you need to let the people know that you're going to be accessible to them. Because you're not accessible, you're not going to be nothing in this town. You can forget it. No, no, hold up. Your card is not, no, I'm talking about next year. It's, we have another election. It doesn't matter, but anyway, we need accessibility and accountability, and we need these employers to be respectful to these people that are here. I noticed that in my zone, we have no accountability. Nobody's answering any questions. We never had this when our great mayor Richie was here, and our great mayor Scarlett Golden was here. Now we have been removed from the agenda and adjourned, and then the citizens get up. This is disgrace, and it's tremendously discriminatory and very, very unfair. This is why I don't pledge allegiance to a flag and say justice for all, because I know there is no justice for all. I have sit here and see things get worse and worse and worse. Everybody's walking out of meetings. We never had this when Scarlett Golden was here. Nobody walked out of here in meetings, they stayed up on his podium and finished their job. So you, Ms. Reed, you have not been accessible to your constituents. I'm getting a lot of complaints that you are not accountable and you are not accessible. Same thing about you, Mayor Hendry. They say that nobody can get any questions answered. Where is our city manager? Why did he leave the podium? And before, no city manager's ever left the podium. You are here to do the people's work. Service is the price you pay for the space you occupy. Let's get this work done. Let's make it happen. Get these roads paved and do your work. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robert Stoltman, and on deck is David LaV.
Robert Stoltman, 2305 Valdavia Street, St. Augustine. Good evening to everyone on the dais. I'm here tonight because I want to be like those manatees who were stuck in the moat over there. People were outraged. News trucks descended. After nine long days, the siege parted and the moat was breached and they were saved. This took government coordination and effort. That's what I'm hoping for my daughter, myself, because I have been relegated to the moat for decades. Born at the Halifax Hospital, graduate of Seabreeze High School, 2019, she made the front page of the News Journal when she graduated this year. We are vested in this community. I have provided to Quanita May and a litany of other individuals a solution straddling the two CRAs for the east ISB gateway corridor. It's called AutoStat. I don't know if you've seen it, Mr. Mayor, but several of you have been given parts of the proposal, and the only thing that, what was not shared is the contracts. I wrote all the contracts for all the properties and I delivered them to the principals, which are the Volkswagen Group. And they've not told me no, and so that's why I've come with the idea to invite the investment as opposed to waiting for them to come and then getting caught flat-footed. In the instant case of AutoStat, the exercise will bring to a head the powerful tools of the CRA and other as a package offering. The offering is 100 land contracts pieced together, private owners, city, county property, and putting everything back on the tax rolls in a single overlay development, 47 plus or minus acres for the mere price of $200 million. There are diesel gate monies. The state just received $166 million from VW for a scandal. There's state and federal incentives, and stakeholder buy-in is needed. What I understand, Rob, there are bags of money out there. I know, because before I stopped, I was...
The time is up, sir.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is David LaV, and on deck is Doyle Lewis.
I have the plan. I wrote the data, but the contracts are all written. What I need is the six...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Commissioner. My name is David LaV. That is my private name. Professionally, I'm Major David LaV, U.S. Army. About 12 days ago, I returned to the United States. I've been gone two years, but for some good reason, I purchased a place on Beach Street in 2017, and I want to thank, going from left to right, you, 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 and you, for not making me a fool, and which all of many friends and families who said, why would you move, or why would you purchase in Daytona Beach when most of my family members are familiar with the Panhandle of Florida? But you all have made me geniuses in my family. And I'm going to tell you that, as I told my mother, as I was visiting her yesterday, who lives in New Orleans, that I was on my way to Daytona today, she said, that place is so beautiful. And I said, it is. I said, and you know, Mom, the crazy thing is, there's a lot of people there who think that place has a lot of problems, and she said, first-world problems. And that is that, you know, when you compare yourself to Libsyn, Portugal, when you compare yourself to places in Spain, Nice, France, yes, well, there's a difference. However, the truth of the matter is that just about anywhere in Florida is beautiful, and the place that I've chosen is excellent. If it's okay, Mr. Mayor, where I'm from, they have a strong mayor system, but I know here there's a different system. So I only brought one shirt. Where I'm from, there's credit that's given, so we don't just talk about, thank you, but most recently, the Zone 3 Commissioner has, I have to give credit to where credit's due, and I thought it was most appropriate while I was overseas in the Middle East to give her a token of my appreciation, and I thought the most appropriate thing would be a shirt that looks like this, which is a Camp Arif John Jim Kuwait T-shirt to say thank you. And I do have a shirt that, Mr. Mayor, you and the city manager will have to wrestle for to decide who gets it. But again, thank you, thank you, thank you for all the work that you've done. There are issues, but not really.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your service, sir. Thank you.
We said that together.
Our next speaker is Doyle Lewis, and on deck is Sandy Murphy.
Good evening, Commission. Doyle Lewis, Daytona Beach, United States. I've got about five things to pick on. The number one thing I want to make sure of, to be a strong leader, you have to be kind and strong, which is a little bit hard to do. Kindness is not weakness. The affordable housing crisis, the article that I got today spoke mainly on Florida and Florida legislature continues to sweep funds from the William E. Shetelsken Affordable Housing Act. The general revenue budget, that's where they've been sweeping some and putting it into general revenue. This is an article talking about how last year's Hurricane Maria hit Puerto Rico and how 11,000, almost 12,000 Puerto Ricans moved to South Florida, up to like Miami. That still is an issue, and now we got this new couple of storms that hit there. So we just need to catch up on helping Florida too. It's an internal movement and a displacement with these storms. The last storms that actually came through or almost hit Daytona Beach, I was walking. The next thing is the first-step shelter. Anybody that's going to help support cleaning up Daytona with homelessness and with panhandling needs to start talking about fundraising. One or two months from now, probably in January, we'll be needing more funds and more funds. So the fundraising effort, anybody that's in support with some of that needs to get ready with that building being shown before it gets occupied. That's a very strong thing to do is fundraising, probably about 12 times a year. Well, I got through them all. I usually don't do that. And I wish everybody a good night.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sandy Murphy, and on deck is Ian Turner.
Good evening, Sandy Murphy, 136 Park Avenue. I want to talk about the Beach Street redevelopment plan. We're getting prepared to undertake a plan that's currently 10 years old. Other aspects of that plan, like a handful of kiosks all the way down the opposite side of Beach Street, have been dismissed, but for some reason, reconfiguring that streetscape is still part of the plan. I've spent a lot of time over the past two weeks talking to some of the merchants down there, and the feedback that I'm getting from them is, one, several of them are hanging on by the skin of their teeth, and, two, they would absolutely prefer to have something in terms of activity going on rather than streetscape improvements. Bringing people in is the problem, not bringing, making things pretty. We have a lovely city. We need to do more things to attract people to those areas where the people, where our merchants are struggling, and so I think we need to give some thought to that. Another suggestion that I would have is that why don't we try making those changes to Beach Street on a temporary basis, using paint, using barricades, seeing how it plays out, rather than investing hundreds of thousands of dollars to see how it plays out? Whether you're in favor of making the changes or you're opposed to making the changes, what does anybody have to lose by trying it on a low-cost, temporary way and seeing how that impacts what's going on on that street? I think it's absolutely something that we should consider. And the second thing I'd like to talk about real quickly is that the Board of Building Codes voted yesterday to demolish the oldest contributing structure in the Surfside Village down to the slab. It is too late for this property, but we really need to start having a plan of how to preserve our historic properties before they are all flat down to the slab, and I hope that you will be instructing staff to start taking a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker tonight is Ian Turner.
Good evening. My name is Ian Turner. I work at 522 MMB, and I'm here to discuss the issue of speeding. I have Watts sitting out on the barbershop porch, certain people coming through about 70, 80 miles an hour. When they turn off Ridgewood, coming back towards the campus, you can hear nothing but engine. This is something that I understand is hard for the officers. I've talked to Chief Capri, comm staff meetings, everything. What I've done to even help them, I myself went out to the city, had a speed test done, presented that. I've also had speed signs, made sure there were no speed signs at all to let them know the standard. Now they're up, you know? But when a cop actually is not there, people, when a cat's away, the mouse will play. That's a fact. So I just need something done to help me, help them actually, because I'm doing my job first. I'm not just going to say this needs to get done, what have I done to make this situation better? Another thing is drug trafficking. When you can sit on the porch and watch people smoke crack on the church steps, and then you take pictures of it, and I've sent them to the chief, and he's got someone out there, but this is a numerous thing. I need consistency, not just one time. This is a repeated thing. Every day, people come through, they're doing about 70, 80 miles an hour. It was so bad, one officer was there, Major Garvin, he was there talking across the street, and he had a cup of coffee. He was in an unmarked vehicle, and I was just telling him about it. So when the other guy left, he was sitting there. Guy came through doing about 70, I mean, he zoomed by. Major cut on lights, turned around, he was on it. This happens every day, you know? So I understand that being an officer, it's a hard job, but if they don't see you, they're going to continue this. We've had drug sales right in front of our business, and we're sitting there watching this, and I'm like, send a picture? What else can I do? You know, some people say, you know, they don't like cops. Well, I do. Nobody likes cops until they need them. They have a job just like everyone else, and I appreciate that, you know? So whatever I can do to help, there it is. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Appreciate that.
Mr. Turner, I'd like to say thank you for coming tonight. I did ask you to come, and I did address your issue earlier when I had an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, that's correct. Good night, Daytona Beach.